Hi, I'm Robin Schultz and welcome to the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit the subscribe button so that you're always alerted when we have a new video. Thanks.
And so we're lacking a strain in some audio of the world best as can with one microphone. I'll walk through the agenda for Monday night beginning of the resolution to figure out all our license into this.
There are no issues with this request from the zoning department or from the police department.
Any questions on item three for Mr.? Item four is a resolution authorizing the advance of the funds for training of the FBI National Academy Chief.
Mayor Council, we've got Captain Chuck McDonald to the FBI National Academy starting the 28th of March through the 5th of June 2025. He'll be the fifth command level person to graduate. And when you look at 1% of upper management of the police department has hit the go, so we're very, very pleased that he's got an opportunity, probably the best training you can have in the world right now. So good to get on those months, but $4,000 when he gets there, you spend about a thousand one off the bat for a uniform and so forth and then other things that pop up. So we appreciate the $4,000 that he can take with him. Thank any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item five is for Chief Bidman. Authorizing Mary Daskew amendment to the agreement with locality Nega. Have you fired department software? I do not see the fire department after that. Is Quinn having anything about this on?
Hello? You want me to talk about?
Um.
Okay, is the annual contract renewal of the first year services with cost reduction due to no longer using two of the modules?
Yeah, so I can just go briefly to it.
Okay.
Since Chief's not here. So as Wendy said, it's just a renewal of the software platform that they currently use that tracks incidents, materials, equipment, things like that, that they track everything. Two of the modules have been replaced, so there's been a cost reduction inside of that. We replaced with a different software platform that they're using for tracking patient care and things like that. So that's really what it is. It's just kind of looking.
Any questions, Mr. Cope? I hope the chief will be here on Monday so we can ask him any question that may come up at the weekend prior to Monday. Item six, Mr. Martin, is a resolution authorizing the granting of an access easement for property, landlocked property.
Yes, sir. We actually dealt with the annexation and zoning of this property not too terribly long ago off of Anika Drive adjacent to the Abingdon by the River neighborhood. And what is being requested is the grant of an easement to access that property across city-owned property as part of the land holdings signature that were donated to the city running along the frontage of the Cohaba River. The property in question is landlocked from Anika Drive. And as part of discussions early on in the development of the Abingdon by the River development, we city staff certainly were amenable to having an easement across the dedicated property once we indeed held the deed to it. And it has since been donated to the city. And so this would allow access for Mr. Nunley to access his property.
Any questions for Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Like the property in Anika, how big is it and what is the intended use for it?
Okay, this is approximately 12 acres. It was owned, single-family residential with the provision that it be limited to a single residential dwelling unit. So the property cannot be subdivided further. So this access easement is in essence for a driveway access to that one house that would be developed on site.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Now move to item seven, a resolution directed for the donation of property for the construction of Big Valley Dale. I'm confused with Little Valley Dale.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lyra. This item and the next item are both related to the Big Valley Dale Road widening project. These resolutions are donations for city property to Aldo for the construction of this project. The first one is Track 44. It's located at 4,800 Valley Dale Road. This is adjacent to Spain Park or Veterans Park. And it is 6.137 acres that will be donated for widening projects in that area. The second one, the next item on agenda, is Track 63B. It's located at 101 Biltmore Drive, and that's almost a half an acre, where that's at the interest of Habersham subdivision. It's there at a traffic signal at Inverness Parkway. We have been working for years on the acquisition property for this project. Out of 94 tracks, we have two tracks remaining, so we can finalize this and start the utility phase, which is next. So in the next upcoming council meetings, you will see a revised utility and construction estimate agreement from Aldo for us to execute. We'll bring that forward to you and discuss that at those meetings. Just a little bit about the project for those of you that aren't familiar with it. Valley Dale Road project will start from just west of Caldwell Mill Road. It will widen to five lanes to Inverness Center Drive. So as I said, this is a legacy regional project started in 1998. So we've been working on this project a long time, and it will provide significant roadway and pedestrian capacity improvements for not only Hoover but Shelby County. So to date, this project has allocated $2.45 million for engineering and $8.83 million in the right way purchases.
That covers item seven and eight. Any questions for the gentleman on that question?
Yes, Mr. President, sir.
Chris, I know it's hard to tell with two tracks remaining and utility relocation. What's your best guess for turning dirt on actual road construction?
The actual road construction will be, you know, minimum, I would say, two years because the utility phase will have to start first. So before any construction will start, we have to get those utilities out of the way.
What are the costs associated with the next? Is there costs associated with utility phase on our end? And is it? I know we've had this budgeted since 1998, but I'm sure costs have.
Yes, sir, it has. And that will be part of that revised utility and construction agreement we'll be bringing forward. So I, you know, the utility phase could be as much as $10 million. And of course, air match of that is 20%. So air match would be $2 million for that phase. And we do have money budgeted for that, but we may need to add some to be able to cover that remaining part.
Do you know how much we have currently budgeted?
I apologize. I don't have that number with me tonight, but I believe it's 1.6 million, but I believe we're four or five, maybe four or $500,000 short.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chris, I appreciate you because I appreciate you because I know when.
Yes, sir.
What goes along with trying to get utilities located and what's the mileage? Oh, yeah, what's the footage?
Oh, my goodness. I'll have to do that too. I apologize.
Isn't it over a mile, lower mile?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Several miles.
So typically each utility will be given the option to do betterment, meaning that it's an eight inch line in the ground, they can go to a 12 inch line if it's used to. Fire department will be a part of that process and determine if they want to put some more fire hydrants in certain places. Chief, is that all? Is that all considered us, any kind of Shelby County fire on that? Is that all Hoover? Do we even know?
It's not all the city of Hoover.
So it's not all city of Hoover. You're going to have to deal with the fire departments of those areas as well too, see what they want to do. So I hate to say it sometimes with these state projects, it's, it can carry on because you have to do so many different, even the fire company. Our company, I don't know what they want to do part of the process, so this is a big honor to take. So thank you so much for all of you guys' time.
Anyone else on that item? All right, Mr. Reed, you also have number nine, accepting a bid for Top True Landstone.
Yes, sir. They decided to recommend bid 2501 for the construction of the Top of True sidewalk project in the Reston Woods community. After reviewing the bids, our staff recommends awarding the bid in the amount of $422,467.16 to J.D. Moore's Construction Company. The low bidder on this project, we did reject that. We reviewed that. That low bidder requested to withdraw his bid due to some discrepancies in information he was given while putting his bid together, and we honored that for him and went to the next bidder. This project was approved in the fiscal year 24 budget. There's $747,000 allocated. We have a little bit over $700,000 left to construct this, so we felt like that was a pretty good bid we got on this project.
Any questions on the Top of True side?
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Mr. Miller is here for resolution accepting the bid for roof improvement project.
That's correct. So this is the next phase for the library roof. We did the last phase last year. This we broke into A, B, C, and D sections. So we took care of section A last year. This is for sections B and C. Section D is a metal roof, so it was removed from the scope of this last project. So it's our recommendation that standard roofing of Montgomery be awarded the bid. A lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the total amount of $1,015,000.
Any questions, Mr. Miller? Is C the final phase?
B and C are the final phase. That's right.
Sure, this will complete it.
This is B and C.
But this will complete it, right?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, Mr. Miller? Can this budget?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 11, amends the budget for fiscal year 2025 to accept community partner contributions for the Galleria Market Study.
Yes, this item goes along with the next item.
Yeah, we can take those together.
Mr. Knight is going to speak about, but there were several community partners that provided contributions towards the Galleria study. So this is a budget amendment to accept the funds, contributions from those sources, $31,275, if I remember the exact amount. So to accept those contributions and to make the funds available to spend, to add to the already budgeted funds of the cities to pay for the project.
Any questions for Mr. Knight or Ms. Cornet on that? Either of them? Very good. Mr. Knight, you have anything there?
Just that the agreement, as I've sent to council, will come into place, bring on the Hunnigan group, which was the group out of nine RFP responses that were chosen. And they'll have six phases of work during their process, and their cost to us would be about $182,000 for the contingency of $15,000 that would go on top of that. $18,000, I'm sorry, bring to a grand total of $200.
The timeframe for completion?
Four to six months. Four months is what they're looking at.
Any questions for the two folks?
So the city portion of that project was $170,600?
$171,600.
Okay. And so those additional contributions are coming in to make up the difference for what will be spent for the project?
Correct.
And did we have the 170 budget?
Yes. That was the budget, yes, sir.
Any other question?
Hey, thank you, Greg. Who are the other partners or stakeholders that are involved with this?
Sure, gladly. Brookfield Properties, River Chase Business Association, Jim Wilson and Associates, and High Regency, the Winfrey.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is a resolution for the expenditure of funds for Elevating Hoover.
Yes, Council, we discussed during money time of putting this particular expenditure on hold until March, especially since we were getting some feedback on our revenues that came in. We also asked Ms. Baldwin to give a presentation on that, which she did, and also to see if she'd like to answer any questions and also giving up that she would like to give at this present time. And this was what was to allocate the $1,000 to this particular fiscal year budget.
Good evening. I'd just like to say that I know there was some concern early on about in the allocation of those funds, whether or not we were doing our due diligence because it was a public-private partnership. And so I'm excited to announce and bring you all up to date in that we have commitments and have raised over $160,000 from the private sector. Just this week, we have companies like Rascal Quarry, who has not been a member of our chamber for several years, has come on board. Orlando Health, and they are purchasing Brookwood Baptist. They're coming on board also. So there's some excitement and energy in this effort. One of the reasons why is because we have shown these businesses that you're not only becoming a member of the chamber, but you're also, as the tagline says, elevating Hoover. And so this is showing their corporate commitment to this community as well. So it's not a matter of just asking the city for funding, but we're also showing that the private sector is willing to fund this as well.
Any comments or questions on this item?
Derek, would you be able to wait till the second meeting in March? We just had an investment committee meeting. I think there's some discussions if we're going to go on in the next few weeks about, at least about some capital needs. If we could wait until then to make this decision, I think any dollar we can keep in our pocket right now until that decision is made is a good thing. So, and I'm not trying to instill anybody's thunder with those discussions. I'm just saying, can we wait a little bit longer and hear these capital needs and then make a decision on whether or not we want to move forward with this one meeting?
Jennifer, do you have an update on finances?
With the revenue update?
Yeah, revenue update.
Yes.
Can you give a brief summary of what that entailed?
I didn't bring any of that stuff.
Didn't bring it?
No.
There ain't got to be numbers, but what was the overview?
The overview was that we have a pretty flat trend with revenues. We are keeping pace with the fire year. From what I remember, it was around the 2%. Look, Wendy's got it. You're amazing. Okay, if you can make that a little bit bigger so I can see it. So maybe go to the graphs, Wendy probably will be the, I think it's the next page. Yeah, when we look at sales and use, that accounts for, I'm going to look back here, that accounts for around 70% of the revenues that come into the city. So you can see from 2023 to 2024, we're just heavily reliant on our sales tax collections, right? So they're going up, they're more than they were last year, $104 million as opposed to $103. But when we look at our revenues as our major revenues as a total, it was right up a little under 2% increase. So relatively flat increases on our revenues with expenses, as we all know and experience in our pocketbooks are going up. So that was the gist of the update.
So, Councilman Posey, this is my philosophy. Y'all know how I am. It's one of those things where I'm always going to support a democracy and our ability to be able to vote our conscience. And once you vote, and every man will move to the next topic, that's just how I am. And I don't, I never take anything personal. My philosophy on it though is when I look at revenues, we can take an antiquated process and raise taxes, which I'm not going to be a proponent of, be real clear. Or we could try to utilize the private sector to make a ripe environment for revenues to come here based on our tax revenue. The primary place that businesses come is your chambers, department basically. A lot of businesses may not land, but it's what they do, they do offer a place where folks that may not understand about payroll, understand about how to float our payroll or insurances and things of nature, all in that one bucket that the city is not invested in too. So we start looking at commercial drivers for us. The whole Galleria market is not where it once was. And it is my belief if we, if we don't support, as I say, if I don't support the chambers for new businesses coming in, that utilize them as a source, I'll be putting, I'll be voting to put myself in the situation to not have a vessel for that opportunity of revenue growth that we currently need. And that was, that's my commitment this year. If things don't work out next year, then another decision will need to be made. But Ms. Baldwin has taken on, taken on, have you been around here yet?
No, July of 2024.
Yes, I mean.
For seven months.
Yeah, so I haven't been here yet, and I definitely want to give our chambers opportunity to be successful. So that's, that's my position now, you know, everybody may have a different, that's perfectly fine how I am, but that's, that's where I'm at on discussion.
One comment, one debate was in the, in the budget for this year, we did approve and earmark $100,000 at that time, we said we were going to hold on to, but that, this isn't a budget amendment request to be able to pay. Those funds have already been budgeted to pay.
And even though revenue is flat, you feel good about our ability to meet the approved budget obligations that we have?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Item number 14, Mr. Martin, welcome back. Amending the temporary moratorium on certain new businesses.
All right. I believe we have a situation where we have a number of businesses located within the city that offer CBD and vape as their primary means of business that were not able or did not renew their business license within a certain timeframe. They're trying to get that corrected with our revenue department. And, but with the language in the moratorium that we currently have being what it is, there's some uncertainty, at least with the revenue department, as to whether or not they can issue, reissue those licenses. And so this is an opportunity for us to clean that item up. If there is a business that has been operating within the city described as one of the uses in the moratorium, that is simply renewing their license, this would allow them to do so. My understanding is it would not deal with businesses that are trading hands, where businesses being sold and purchased by another entity, and therefore it would be a new business license. This is strictly renewal of existing licenses.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, sir. Stick around for our first reading, Mac, if you will, for item 15, to amend the ordinance for zoning in Rossbridge Parkway.
Yes, we have an approximately two and a quarter acre tract of land owned by Deer Valley Partners. It's adjacent to another tract of land slightly under two acres that they own on Rossbridge Parkway. Their holdings in essence are split between two different zoning districts. The two acre tract further to the south, closer to 150, is zone C2, general community commercial. The northern portion of their holdings, the two and a quarter acres is on C-P, preferred commercial, which is for all intents and purposes an office district, not allowing retail sales. So those opportunities not being on the table really limit the number of uses the property can be put to. This item came before the planning commission earlier this month, and of course, city staff looked at this as well. And we really didn't find a compelling reason why the northern roughly half of Deer Valley Partners holdings should not be zone C2, which is what they are requesting. There is still another piece of property further north along Rossbridge Parkway, roughly 200 feet, 2200, 300 feet wide, that would still remain preferred commercial and create a transition between this property and the neighborhood to the north. So this property does not abut the garden home community on that side of Rossbridge Parkway. The comprehensive plan does call for commercial development in this vicinity. The planning commission took up this item and gives you a favorable recommendation for this result.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? This is the first reading.
Mr. Martin, could you email us the approved uses for preferred commercial and the C2? Just side by side, so we can see what the difference of that is? And C2 would require conditional use approvals, correct? Or is that just for certain types?
Depends on what use it is.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Casey, or Council, Councilman Hillbrook, to your point, one of the things that we talked about and asked about at the Planning and Assembly Commission was whether there were any potential nuisance type uses that this would enable that would not require a conditional use with proximity to residential. We did have that concern, and at that time, Mac, I think you answered the question that if there weren't any, that would not require a conditional use. So any of the types of things that we would be concerned about being not only close to the residential, but the neighboring commercial property that is still zoned preferred commercial is owned by Cross Creek Church. And so we were also concerned about anything that might impact a location of a church in the future if they decide to use the property that way. And we were assured that the uses, which I'm sure you'll see when he unmoves to you, were all conditional use of anything that we would have concern about.
That's right. Councilor Driver is correct. So for your uses, for instance, like drive-through restaurants, those things that usually have a higher level of intensity, those generally fall under the conditional use classification in the C2. I will also note, an examination of the zoning map is that the property adjacent to this track, to the rear of the property and all the way heading north to Deer Valley Road Garden Home District Development is already zoned C2. So this property is adjacent on two sides by an existing C2 district.
Did we hear from Pastor Chris with Cross Creek, whether or not they support or have any concerns over this?
No one was present at the planning commission meeting, and our office hasn't received any correspondence against the application.
Good discussion. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Martin. Stick around. Item that seems to keep coming back, item 16. I think we'll go with Monday night. Anything change on that one?
As of right now, the business license, my understanding is for the current use has not been granted yet. Ms. Rouser has submitted her applications. I believe we have a fire inspection yet to be conducted. That's the final step. Building inspections has signed off on the current operation. Zoning is signed off on it under the conditional use that was granted back in 2021 for a maximum of six children. But I do believe that she has submitted everything she needs to as a matter of that inspection that needs to occur before the license can be issued.
Okay. Can you read the conditional use? Can you, can you read her conditions?
The conditions that she's supposed The conditions that she's supposedly operating under now?
That she has to meet, if she wants to increase. Do you have those?
I think he's addressing what she needs to do just to get a business license for her current use.
That's correct. Yes. So we discovered at the last council meeting where this came up, that she, in fact, did not have a business license operating as she is today with the maximum of six children. Her Department of Human Resources permit actually places her cap on five. So she is operating with a cap of five and is operating under a conditional use granted to her back in 2021. When it came to light that she did not have all of her affairs in order for the current use, she proceeded to apply for that business license. It is in the process of trying to get that underway. The conditional use that is pending is to increase to twelve, which includes that she will have to have that operation fully compliant with building and fire codes for those twelve occupants. It's also my understanding since the planning commission meeting that there has been some opposition made known to that application from the neighbor. Now, I don't have that correspondence with me, but I believe we have it on file.
Based on conversations with members, I'm going to suggest we take a wait-and-see approach between now and Monday night to see if the fire inspection gets completed, if the business license gets granted, and if so, take it up. If not, I would anticipate a contingency for this one.
Since March seventeenth.
Okay. Well, let's say the March seventeenth, to see if those all, those things.
I'm curious, Chief, when you do your inspection this time, it's for the six children, will there be different expectations or different requirements that she would have to come into compliance with before she would be eligible to have the twelve?
You're exactly correct. Do you want me to come down?
Sure, if you don't mind. That'd be great.
So for someone to have a daycare similar to what she's doing now, the state fire marshal requires a fire inspection. And the state fire marshal's office can't inspect all of these facilities throughout the state, so they lean on the local jurisdictions to do that. And so in order for her to do it legally, we'll do the inspection that the state requires. And then, once that's complete, she'll be able to get her license to do what she's doing, and then get her business license through the city to operate. If she chooses to increase to twelve, I don't know the trigger, I don't know if it's ten or eleven or twelve, I don't know if the number's twelve, but when it triggers to that number, she has to do substantial upgrades, including an operating sprinkler system in her home. And that's not us, that's the fire code. And you guys adopted the fire code, and it's my job to enforce the fire code. If I don't enforce the fire code, then I'm not doing what I'm supposed to do. So it's substantial. We're not trying to get in the way of her doing business, but we want to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing. So there are substantial conditions that she'll have to do in order to increase the number of children that she supervises.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Mr. Martin, just a process question. It concerns me that we have had this operating business with children in this home for a period of time without the fire inspection that was required in order for it to operate legally. And so I'm wondering what sort of process changes we may have in the works to prevent that from happening again in the future.
Well, I will say that there, as far as to the fire marshal, there was an inspection conducted on the front end of her current operation. Now, where she fell short was getting the building department to inspect and then go and actually acquire her business license. In her mind, the fire inspection and the license from Alabama DHR was all she needed, again, in her mind. So the premises had been inspected from a fire standpoint. However, as part of our process for getting a business license is per se taking the need for inspections by both building and fire, current inspections. So that's what she's undertaking currently. So I know we have had some discussion internally about this process. We have a case where certainly, this is a bit unique, because most instances where we have a conditional use application coming before the planning and zoning office as well as planning and zoning commission, they're for new business activities. So the vast majority of those instances, you're not going to have a business entity already operating. So this is a little unique in that we already have a business, they're seeking to expand, and we're adjusting our processes internally, coordination between our office as well as revenue, to make sure that that doesn't fall through the cracks again. But in most instances where you have a conditional use application coming before us, there is no business entity yet. They are working their way first through the zoning entitlement, which is on the far end, the far front end of opening a business, making sure the zoning entitlements are in place, and then moving from there to building and fire inspections in order to be positioned to get a certificate of occupancy. And then once the certificate of occupancy is issued, then they can get their business license. That's the traditional method through which a business will go through all of the entitlement and inspection processes. But we have been in coordination to sit to that if we have a re-up or an expansion, re-application for conditional uses, we catch this.
So when we had the first conditional use case, whatever council approved the first time, are you saying that she was already operating at that time, or so she was not, and she went through the fire inspection, and she got her DHR license, but she did not complete the process to get her business license?
That's correct.
So I guess my question is more about, I understand you're saying we've identified a gap for an increase or a re-up of the conditional use, but isn't there also a gap on the front end in that she was able to operate for some years without completing the entire process that was actually a condition of her zoning application in the first place?
And I feel like we have done some good work plugging that gap with both our office as well as revenue. Sometimes it may just be as simple as monitoring these applications as they come before this body. And if they are approved, they're on the watch list, not only for us, but also for the various other departments that are impacted, including the revenue department. So this has provided an opportunity for us to better coordinate and talk, not be quite as solid.
Sounds like a prudent idea. Absolutely.
So, you know, I think this business owner, I believe she was, I think she was doing what she thought was the right thing. She got her inspection through the state fire marshal's office, she got her permit through DHR, and she was ready to operate. So Chief Thornton has identified that when we see these inspections that come from the fire marshal's office to us to look at these daycares, especially a home daycare, then we'll make sure that we track that and make sure everybody understands. If she puts a sprinkler system in this home and moves it to a commercial occupancy, we'll have to inspect it annually. We don't have the authority to inspect it as a home daycare, except for the one time. DHR goes in and handles those inspections annually when it's a home, if I, I think I'm saying this right, but they go in and do these inspections in these home daycares themselves. DHR does. So, does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll just note also on the coordinating with the building department, fire department has mentioned a number of items that will have to be brought up to speed if she is to expand to twelve, limit cap for a group home daycare. There are also a number of things that she will have to deal with on the building code side, including handicap accessible restrooms, expanded space for the additional children, as well as adequate means of ingress, egress in the event of an emergency on the premises. So we're talking about substantial improvements. We've communicated that to the applicant. She has received those as if she understands what's going to be required of her. But yeah, a number of improvements.
All right. That's all for tonight. Thank you all.